The name of the Lord.
Matthew 28:21 25 verses
Matthew 28:21
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. When Jesus was on earth with various needs, Many people met Jesus Christ when he was on the earth with various needs. Many people met Jesus Christ when he was on earth with various needs. Many people met Jesus Christ when he was on earth with various needs.
Directly they showed their diseases and supplications and prayers.
One man was asking for healing. One man was asking for healing. Somebody asked if they should be blessed. Some Christians who are not able to see him, have heard them. The Pharisees and Sadducees also wanted to test him, they asked some questions. The Pharisees and Sadducees also wanted to test him, they asked some questions. The Pharisees and Sadducees also wanted to test him, they asked some questions. Jesus Christ met various questions when he was on the earth. When he was on the earth. When he was on the earth. Those who come here in this morning in the presence of God, we are also having various questions. Those who come here in this morning in the presence of God, we are also having various questions. Many questions. Many questions. Many questions. We make various supplications and prayers. When we make various supplications and prayers. When we make various supplications and prayers. When he approached God. When he approached God. When he approached God. When he approached God. He tried to seek God when he wanted to search all his needs. When he wanted to search all his needs. When he wanted to search all his needs. All people are having the confidence that God can do all things what man cannot do. All people are having the confidence that God can do all things what man cannot do. Here, one mother came to the presence of God with these two young sons. Here, one mother came to the presence of God with these two young sons. Here, one mother came to the presence of God with these two young sons. By worshiping him, she was asking, "Lord, I want a supplication from you." By worshiping him, she was asking, "Lord, I want a supplication from you." This gospel it is, she, the mother came with two children. This gospel it is, she, the mother came with two children. When we see in Mark 10:39. When we see in Mark 10:39. There, there are children. There, there are children. There, there are children. They, only the two children came and offered their supplications. They, only the two children came and offered their supplications. The mother and the children had the same mind. The mother and the children had the same mind. What kind of thought we are having regarding our children? What kind of thought we are having regarding our children? Most of the group of parents. Most of the group of parents. They are all parents sitting here. They are all parents sitting here. What is your thought about your children? What is your thought about your children? What is your mind regarding your children? What is your mind regarding your children? How are you praying how your children should be? How are you praying how your children should be? You are praying for your wicked son to become a good one. You are praying for your wicked son to become a good one. The son is disobedient, we want to involve him. The son is disobedient, we want to involve him. You are praying for him for a good education if he don't have a good education. You are praying for him for a good education if he don't have a good education. If they become a youth, we are praying for their future.[230.26][230.29][S02. If they become a youth, we are praying for their future.[232.26][232.29][S02. You are praying for their job if they don't have.[233.96][233.99][S02. You are praying for their job if they don't have.[236.86][236.89][S02. When they come to God, they come to God.[239.86][239.89][S02. When they come to God, they come to God.[242.86][242.89][S02. We see even this mother came with two children and the children alone came, their supplication was same.[249.06][249.09][S02. We see even this mother came with two children and the children alone came, their supplication was same.[252.96][252.99][S02. What is our state of supplication today in this presence?[256.06][256.09][S02. What is our state of supplication today in this presence?[258.86][258.89][S02. She did not ask for the healing of her children.[261.06][261.08][S02. She did not ask for the healing of her children.[263.86][263.89][S02. She did not ask for the healing of her children.[266.86][266.89][S02. She did not ask for the healing of her children.[269.86][269.89][S02. She did not ask for a good settlement of her children.[272.66][272.69][S02. She did not ask for a good settlement of her children.[275.86][275.89][S02. She got a divine sorrow about her children.[278.66][278.69][S02. She got a divine sorrow about her children.[281.66][281.69][S02. She got a divine sorrow about her children.[284.86][284.89][S02. She got a divine sorrow about her children.[287.36][287.39][S02. She got a divine sorrow about her children.[289.86][289.89][S02. She heard the word of God from Jesus, if you seek the kingdom and the righteousness first.[294.56][294.58][S02. She heard the word of God from Jesus, if you seek the kingdom and the righteousness first.[297.86][297.89][S02. When she heard the word of God from Jesus, if you seek the kingdom and the righteousness first.[301.36][301.39][S02. She forgot all the earthly things after she got this word.[304.66][304.69][S02. She forgot all the earthly things after she got this word.[307.86][307.89][S02. She got a vote.[309.86][309.89][S02. She got a vote.[312.86][312.89][S02. She got a vote.[315.86][315.89][S02. She got a vote.[318.86][318.89][S02. She got a servant.[320.86][320.89][S02. She got a husband.[322.86][322.89][S02. She got a husband.[324.86][324.89][S02. It is true, she got all facilities.[326.86][326.89][S02. It is true, she got all facilities.[329.86][329.89][S02. It is true, she got all facilities.[331.86][331.89][S02. But the nature of the supplication is different among them.[333.86][333.89][S02. But the nature of the supplication is different among them.[336.86][336.89][S02. She got a great desire because children should not be the worldly one.[341.86][341.89][S02. She got a great desire because children should not be the worldly one.[344.66][344.69][S02. There is no use of changing a great man in the world.[347.16][347.19][S02. There is no use of changing a great man in the world.[350.86][350.89][S02. After getting money from the borrowing and making them good education, after that he is going away.[357.56][357.58][S02. After getting money from the borrowing and making them good education, after that he is going away.[360.86][360.89][S02. After getting money from the borrowing and making them good education, after that he is going away.[363.86][363.89][S02. After that he is seeing his parents as seeing the devil with a great anger.[367.26][367.29][S02. After that he is seeing his parents as seeing the devil with a great anger.[370.86][370.89][S02. Till that time he was quite well, after that he became a devil.[374.26][374.29][S02. Till that time he was quite well, after that he became a devil.[377.86][377.89][S02. But this mother brought them in the divine nature and brought them in the divine character.[383.66][383.69][S02. But this mother brought them in the divine nature and brought them in the divine character.[386.26][386.29][S02. What was the desire of the children?[388.26][388.29][S02. What was the desire of the children?[391.86][391.89][S02. When you come in the kingdom, one should be sitting in the right hand side, others should be sitting in the right hand side.[397.86][397.89][S02. When you come in the kingdom, one should be sitting in the right hand side, others should be sitting in the right hand side.[400.86][400.89][S02. What is our supplication today?[403.86][403.89][S02. We are running by any place in the heaven, we get it.[407.06][407.08][S02. We are running by any place in the heaven, we get it.[409.86][409.89][S02. We are running by any place in the heaven, we get it.[412.86][412.89][S02. Why do you like death so soon?[419.86][419.89][S02. Why do you like death so soon?[422.86][422.89][S02. Why do you want to die soon because you are having children as well?[425.86][425.89][S02. Why do you want to die soon because you are having children as well?[428.86][428.89][S02. That answer was different.[430.86][430.89][S02. That answer was different.[433.86][433.89][S02. I can't live holyly but still I live.[436.86][436.89][S02. I don't go to the holiness, I have to go to the coming of Jesus.[440.86][440.89][S02. I don't go to the holiness, I have to go to the coming of Jesus.[443.86][443.89][S02. If Jesus comes now, I can't go with him.[445.86][445.89][S02. If Jesus comes now, I can't go with him.[448.86][448.89][S02. Why you have to die for that?[451.86][451.89][S02. If I left out in the coming of the Lord, I cannot stand in the tribulation period.[455.86][455.89][S02. If I left out in the coming of the Lord, I cannot stand in the tribulation period.[458.86][458.89][S02. I can't even bear the tribulation, no.[461.86][461.89][S02. I can't even bear the tribulation, no.[464.86][464.89][S02. How can I stand in the tribulation period when the devil come directly at my feet?[467.86][467.89][S02. How can I stand in the tribulation period when the devil come directly at my feet?[470.86][470.89][S02. I will not die as a martyr in the tribulation period.[473.86][473.89][S02. I will not die as a martyr in the tribulation period.[476.86][476.89][S02. If I finish my race now.[478.86][478.89][S02. If I finish my race now.[481.86][481.89][S02. I will get one place for delay in our run.[483.86][483.89][S02. How fast the brain is working?[486.86][486.89][S02. How fast the brain is working?[489.86][489.89][S02. It is necessary we have to make right our state and make it upright.[493.86][493.89][S02. It is necessary we have to make right our state and make it upright.[496.86][496.89][S02. You might have come here with various prayers here.[498.86][498.89][S02. You might have come here with various prayers here.[501.86][501.89][S02. You might have come here with various prayers here.[504.86][504.89][S02. About your children, God has to talk.[507.86][507.89][S02. God is going to talk in different way.[509.86][509.89][S02. Why?[511.86][511.89][S02. You see the things about God will give you all the results.[515.86][515.89][S02. You see the things about God will give you all the results.[518.86][518.89][S02. You see the things about God will give you all the results.[521.86][521.89][S02. Seek the kingdom of heaven, all things will be given perfectly.[523.86][523.89][S02. You don't need to worry about this.[525.86][525.89][S02. You don't need to worry about this.[528.86][528.89][S02. You sleep well.[530.86][530.89][S02. You sleep well and get up early morning and work physically.[534.86][534.89][S02. You sleep well and get up early morning and work physically.[537.86][537.89][S02. You don't need to be here with a long face as a death man.[541.26][541.29][S02. Pastor Jacob.[543.26][543.29][S02. Pastor Jacob.[546.26][546.29][S02. There was a problem the ministry.[548.86][548.89][S02. There was a problem the ministry.[551.86][551.89][S02. He did not know how to solve the problem.[553.86][553.89][S02. He did not know how to solve the problem.[556.86][556.89][S02. He got a confusion.[558.86][558.89][S02. But in the problem, how to deal the problem?[563.16][563.19][S02. There is only the end of his words.[567.06][567.08][S02. We can't talk ordinarily.[569.86][569.89][S02. It is a leading if he talks.[573.26][573.29][S02. There is no changing other than that.[576.86][576.89][S02. He did not get a conclusion and he was confused.[581.06][581.08][S02. In the whole night, he did not sleep with the confusion.[586.06][586.08][S02. Jacob, you go and sleep.[591.06][591.08][S02. He turned and see nobody was there.[593.86][593.89][S02. What the scripture says.[595.86][595.89][S02. Watch and pray the scripture says.[599.06][599.08][S02. What is the government?[601.86][601.89][S02. He thought it was a devil.[606.06][606.08][S02. Again he start a praying.[609.26][609.29][S02. Again he start a praying.[612.86][612.89][S02. He is a devil.[615.86][615.89][S02. The problem will be more bigger if he don't sleep so he.[622.26][622.29][S02. Again he caught that.[624.86][624.89][S02. Israelekakarevar thongaradamalay orangodamalay, naa vilichirukkara, nee thungun sunna.[630.86][630.89][S02. I am awakening, you sleep.[633.26][633.29][S02. I am awakening, you sleep.[636.26][636.29][S02. Israelekakarevar thongaradamalay orangodamalay, naa vilichirukkara, nee thungun sunna.[641.86][641.89][S02. I will not sleep for neither slumber those who.[643.86][643.89][S02. I will not sleep for neither slumber those who.[646.86][646.89][S02. I am waiting for you.[648.86][648.89][S02. There was no problem when the morning he got up and come for the.[654.66][654.69][S02. There was no problem when the morning he got up and come for the.[657.86][657.89][S02. You should not go with a dead face when God is giving.[660.86][660.89][S02. You should not go with a dead face when God is giving.[663.86][663.89][S02. You have to come with fresh face.[666.86][666.89][S02. You should go as a fathead cop when you go back.[669.86][669.89][S02. You should go as a fathead cop when you go back.[672.86][672.89][S02. The devil is standing at the door, should go away.[677.16][677.19][S02. You have to come here and make your strength and fat.[682.26][682.29][S02. The presence of God will encourage you.[686.26][686.29][S02. It is a place it encourage you.[689.86][689.89][S02. It is a place it encourage you.[692.86][692.89][S02. When the devil speaks to you, you go with the strength which you have when the messenger of God talk to you.[701.86][701.89][S02. When the devil speaks to you, you go with the strength which you have when the messenger of God talk to you.[704.86][704.89][S02. The devil is standing at the door, should go away.[707.86][707.89][S02. You have to come here and make your strength and fat.[712.26][712.29][S02. The presence of God will encourage you.[714.86][714.89][S02. The presence of God will encourage you.[717.86][717.89][S02. It is a place it encourage you.[720.86][720.89][S02. It is a place it encourage you.[723.86][723.89][S02. The others were left out.[725.86][725.89][S02. Only they were two.[727.86][727.89][S02. Suddenly Isaac asked.[729.86][729.89][S02. Daddy, where is the goat?[733.86][733.89][S02. Because of the question.[738.26][738.29][S02. Only he is going to offer the son, not the goat.[743.26][743.29][S02. Only he is going to offer the son, not the goat.[746.86][746.89][S02. You come quietly, God will look after everything.[750.86][750.89][S02. When the problem comes to you, don't worry, God will look after.[756.86][756.89][S02. When the problem comes to you, don't worry, God will look after.[759.86][759.89][S02. This mother said one of my sons would sit at the left and right, one of the others.[764.86][764.89][S02. This mother said one of my sons would sit at the left and right, one of the others.[767.86][767.89][S02. Now the ten disciples got tense.[769.86][769.89][S02. Now the ten disciples got tense.[772.86][772.89][S02. The twenty-fourth verse, all the ten got a.[774.86][774.89][S02. The twenty-fourth verse, all the ten got a.[777.86][777.89][S02. They were all indication with.[779.86][779.89][S02. We have to go in the sideways, only one of these children should sit here.[787.26][787.29][S02. You see the desire of that mother.[790.26][790.29][S02. Did anyone get that desire like that?[794.26][794.29][S02. Have anybody having the prayer list like that?[799.86][799.89][S02. What is the use of doing here?[805.26][805.29][S02. Today you have to solve this problem.[810.86][810.89][S02. Today you have to solve this problem.[813.86][813.89][S02. You are sitting with the confusion, how to solve the problems today?[819.86][819.89][S02. All our supplications are regarding the worldly.[824.26][824.29][S02. All the worldly things.[827.86][827.89][S02. You leave it all.[829.86][829.89][S02. You see the mind of her.[832.26][832.29][S02. In the cover also, that mother asked, my children should sit in a corner.[840.86][840.89][S02. In the cover also, that mother asked, my children should sit in a corner.[843.86][843.89][S02. In my father's house, there are many mansions.[847.26][847.29][S02. If not so, I would have told you.[850.26][850.29][S02. I will prepare a place for you and again come and gather you.[856.26][856.29][S02. She did not say one place it is going to.[862.26][862.29][S02. The thief was hanging, there was cross set, Lord remember me when you come into the paradise.[872.26][872.29][S02. He was not a sane man.[874.26][874.29][S02. He was not a sane man.[877.26][877.29][S02. He did not leave us a godly man.[879.26][879.29][S02. At the last minute, he accepted Jesus Christ as a law.[884.86][884.89][S02. He believed he got a kingdom.[887.86][887.89][S02. He believed he got a kingdom.[890.86][890.89][S02. He understood the life after the death.[893.86][893.89][S02. He understood the life after the death.[896.86][896.89][S02. When you come into the kingdom, we said.[904.06][904.08][S02. When you come into the kingdom, we said.[907.26][907.29][S02. Immediately Jesus said, "Today you will be with me in paradise."[910.26][910.29][S02. It is a paradise, it is not a throne.[913.26][913.29][S02. The paradise is not a throne.[916.26][916.29][S02. There is a place in the new heaven.[921.86][921.89][S02. But this mother says, "My children should sit on the throne, not in the new heaven."[932.86][932.89][S02. But this mother says, "My children should sit on the throne, not in the new heaven."[935.86][935.89][S02. What kind of great imagination for this mother?[938.26][938.29][S02. How she got the vision?[941.26][941.29][S02. How the indication for her?[944.86][944.89][S02. She forgot all things of the world.[948.26][948.29][S02. She forgot all things of the world.[951.26][951.29][S02. She forgot all things of the world.[954.86][954.89][S02. She got a desire of thinking about the throne where Jesus sit in the heaven.[958.86][958.89][S02. We need such kind of mothers and fathers to this church.[964.26][964.29][S02. All parents should become this mind.[967.86][967.89][S02. If it is changed like that, the synagogue church will be a holy church.[973.86][973.89][S02. If it is changed like that, the synagogue church will be a holy church.[976.86][976.89][S02. If it is changed like that, the synagogue church will be a holy church.[979.86][979.89][S02. If it is changed like that, the synagogue church will be a holy church.[982.86][982.89][S02. We will be having a longing about, I have to be with Jesus, we have to go together, not on the earthly things.[987.26][987.29][S02. We will be having a longing about, I have to be with Jesus, we have to go together, not on the earthly things.[990.86][990.89][S02. If you are having that longing, the divine nature will be growing in you.[994.26][994.29][S02. He has to sit in the right and left side of Jesus.[999.26][999.29][S02. What kind of good supplication?[1002.26][1002.29][S02. Seeing her, Jesus said.[1007.06][1007.08][S02. Matthew 28:21.[1011.26][1011.29][S02. Don't sleep in this message also. When Jesus says, "What kind of difference supplication you have brought to me?" When Jesus says, "What kind of difference supplication you have brought to me?" The Canaanite woman asked for deliverance from the devil. The Canaanite woman asked for deliverance from the devil. The devil is asking for deliverance from the devil. The devil is asking for deliverance from the devil. The devil is asking for deliverance from the devil. When all parents were asking for different things, but she was asking only the throne for the children. When all parents were asking for different things, but she was asking only the throne for the children.[1063.86][1063.89][S02. One group will come whatever message I give.[1066.86][1066.89][S02. Healing service is done, everyone is happy.[1069.86][1069.89][S02. After the healing service is over, one group will come for the praying for healing.[1075.26][1075.29][S02. After the healing service is over, one group will come for the praying for healing.[1078.26][1078.29][S02. The message did not work for them.[1081.26][1081.29][S02. The message did not work for them.[1084.26][1084.29][S02. They did not get the healing service.[1087.26][1087.29][S02. When the person asks, "What is your desire?"[1090.86][1090.89][S02. When the person asks, "What is your desire?"[1093.86][1093.89][S02. If you hear with a divine nature, your mind will be changed.[1096.86][1096.89][S02. If you hear with a divine nature, your mind will be changed.[1099.86][1099.89][S02. When the person asks, "What is your desire?"[1102.86][1102.89][S02. If you hear with a divine nature, your mind will be changed.[1106.26][1106.29][S02. This mother got a divine nature for them.[1111.86][1111.89][S02. You change the prayer for your children in a different way.[1117.26][1117.29][S02. Don't pray for good marks.[1121.86][1121.89][S02. If you study well, you will get good marks.[1124.86][1124.89][S02. We have to pray for the evolvators.[1130.26][1130.29][S02. He is not writing the example.[1134.26][1134.29][S02. We have to get the favor from one who corrects the paper.[1138.26][1138.29][S02. One girl said to me.[1140.86][1140.89][S02. You did not pray well because the question was very tough.[1145.86][1145.89][S02. Because I did not pray well, question tough.[1150.86][1152.26][S02. What is next?[1154.26][1154.29][S02. You have to pray for one who corrects because the question is very tough because you did not pray well.[1161.86][1161.89][S02. We are only praying for this.[1166.26][1166.29][S02. You have to pray for one who corrects because the question is very tough because you did not pray well.[1171.86][1171.89][S02. You have to pray for one who corrects because the question is very tough because you did not pray well.[1174.86][1174.89][S02. You are not studying in the school or tuition well, but you are praying for one who corrects the paper.[1179.86][1179.89][S02. Now the state has changed.[1182.86][1182.89][S02. The parents and the children's states are different.[1187.26][1187.29][S02. When the class is very less, she will say twenty-two children have failed in my class.[1194.86][1194.89][S02. When the class is very less, she will say twenty-two children have failed in my class.[1197.86][1197.89][S02. We are not saying one, ten children passed.[1200.86][1200.89][S02. You have to pray for one who corrects because the question is very tough because you did not pray well.[1203.86][1203.89][S02. You never get past such kind of parents till they.[1207.86][1207.89][S02. You have to pray for one who corrects because the question is very tough because you did not pray well.[1212.86][1212.89][S02. The parents are motivating the children and giving money for the revaluation.[1216.86][1216.89][S02. Parents should need the training, how should they grow up their children?[1224.86][1224.89][S02. If you give the marriage at nineteen years old, how she will be after that?[1234.86][1234.89][S02. Without maturity, they are caught in the life and they are doing all bad things.[1241.86][1241.89][S02. You have to bring your children in the divine nature.[1245.26][1245.29][S02. Can you bring them in the glory?[1249.86][1249.89][S02. You have to bring the four children, God has given you four children in the glory.[1255.86][1255.89][S02. This mother got two children, they got calling.[1261.06][1261.08][S02. They got calling for the ministry, she has given for that.[1267.26][1267.29][S02. Not only they commit.[1270.26][1270.29][S02. My children should not become a Judas when he come to throne.[1276.06][1276.08][S02. This is a question, we have to ask them.[1280.26][1280.29][S02. My children will not did anything, she was scared, she had a worry.[1282.86][1282.89][S02. She came to the pain of sorrow.[1288.26][1288.29][S02. She came to the pain of sorrow.[1291.26][1291.29][S02. She feels, why children will get something, one of you is a devil.[1298.26][1298.29][S02. In the sorrow, she was saying, "Lorn voice."[1305.26][1305.29][S02. In the sorrow, she was saying, "Lorn voice."[1308.26][1308.29][S02. You have to sit at the right hand.[1311.26][1311.29][S02. She got a desire, my children should sit at.[1315.86][1315.89][S02. The desire of the mother.[1319.26][1319.29][S02. She was wondering by knowing the desire of the mother.[1322.26][1322.29][S02. Do you know what you are asking?[1326.86][1326.89][S02. Is it an ordinary thing?[1332.86][1332.89][S02. Is it a long process?[1339.26][1339.29][S02. It is a great work.[1342.86][1342.89][S02. It is a beginning and a growth and an ending, after the ending only you can grow the quality.[1350.86][1350.89][S02. Are you able to drink in the cup?[1354.86][1354.89][S02. Can you take the baptism which I gave after I speak?[1358.86][1358.89][S02. Jesus asked this question to the mother and the children.[1364.26][1364.29][S02. They said, "Lord, it is just.[1369.26][1369.29][S02. They were standing in the full swing to go to heaven, they did not say no.[1375.86][1375.89][S02. You see the spirit of when they are taking them for the ministry.[1382.86][1382.89][S02. Where can you put the vinegar?[1390.86][1390.89][S02. There will be great suffering in the ministry.[1393.86][1393.89][S02. No matter, I will come.[1396.26][1396.29][S02. They will be in the full swing.[1399.86][1399.89][S02. It is no problem, the speed is same.[1403.86][1403.89][S02. There are many problems when the speed is decreasing slowly.[1409.86][1409.89][S02. You have to pray for them.[1413.06][1413.08][S02. We are able to do that.[1415.06][1415.08][S02. We will drink in the cup which you.[1418.26][1418.29][S02. We will take the baptism which you have.[1421.86][1421.89][S02. We are able, they said.[1424.26][1424.29][S02. When you go to the throne, you have to go to the throne.[1430.86][1430.89][S02. You have to come in the church.[1434.26][1434.29][S02. You have to come in the church.[1437.86][1437.89][S02. First of all, you have to drink in the cup.[1440.86][1440.89][S02. There is the baptism you have to take and you have to drink.[1446.26][1446.29][S02. You have to come in the experience and go forward.[1451.26][1451.29][S02. You don't think if you come to the Pentecost church, you will get a place in the heaven.[1458.26][1458.29][S02. Only not in the money but in the merits.[1462.06][1462.08][S02. God is going to give you with the life.[1465.26][1465.29][S02. First of all, you have to drink in the cup.[1470.86][1470.89][S02. Secondly, you have to take the baptism which God has.[1475.86][1475.89][S02. When Jesus said, "These are the two children," the mother said, "We do."[1483.86][1483.89][S02. When Jesus said, "These are the two children," the mother said, "We do."[1486.86][1486.89][S02. The new Testament church is the throne.[1489.86][1489.89][S02. The new Testament church is for the glorious place.[1493.86][1493.89][S02. The new Testament church is for the glorious place.[1496.86][1496.89][S02. In English, it is said heaven and earth.[1501.06][1501.08][S02. In English, it is said heaven and earth.[1504.06][1504.08][S02. In English, it is said heaven.[1507.86][1507.89][S02. God created the heaven first.[1513.26][1513.29][S02. The scripture says.[1516.06][1516.08][S02. The scripture says.[1519.06][1519.08][S02. The scripture says.[1522.86][1522.89][S02. The heaven is a throne and the earth is my footstep.[1524.86][1524.89][S02. The heaven is a throne and the earth is my footstep.[1527.86][1527.89][S02. He created the heaven.[1530.86][1530.89][S02. He created the heaven.[1533.86][1533.89][S02. I think you can understand.[1537.26][1537.29][S02. The heaven is my throne.[1541.06][1541.08][S02. The heaven is my throne.[1544.26][1544.29][S02. The creation of God only the throne comes first.[1548.26][1548.29][S02. What is the right meaning of throne?[1551.26][1551.29][S02. There is a church.[1553.26][1553.29][S02. Jeremiah.[1555.26][1555.29][S02. 3:7.[1561.26][1564.46][S02. Jerusalem is called Jerusalem, the throne of the Lord.[1570.26][1570.29][S02. What he created first?[1575.86][1575.89][S02. The church was first created.[1583.86][1583.89][S02. We were all drawn or gaven in the mind of God.[1589.86][1589.89][S02. We were in the presence of God.[1594.86][1594.89][S02. We are having place in that.[1598.86][1598.89][S02. In the blue print, we are having place.[1601.86][1601.89][S02. In the blue print, we are having place.[1604.86][1604.89][S02. We are having the place in the blue print.[1607.86][1607.89][S02. Hallelujah.[1609.86][1609.89][S02. We are having a place there.[1612.86][1612.89][S02. Can we see in Proverbs 8:31?[1618.26][1618.29][S02. When I was a child, I was with my family, I was thinking.[1623.86][1623.89][S02. I was rejoiced with the people.[1627.26][1627.29][S02. When I was like a lovely.[1629.26][1629.29][S02. When I was like a lovely.[1632.26][1632.29][S02. I was a prophet regarding Jesus Christ.[1635.26][1635.29][S02. Every time I was allowed to change by him.[1639.06][1639.08][S02. I was rejoiced with the people of him.[1646.06][1646.08][S02. This is a story of a long time ago.[1650.86][1650.89][S02. It was an experience, Solomon said before Jesus Christ was born.[1653.86][1653.89][S02. When we were all with the family, when we were with the family, when we were with the family, we were talking.[1660.26][1660.29][S02. Now God has brought us, when the time came, we were before that in this mind.[1664.26][1664.29][S02. The first of all, Jerusalem was created in the creation.[1670.86][1670.89][S02. If you want to go to the throne.[1674.26][1674.29][S02. You have to take the baptism which he has taken.[1678.86][1678.89][S02. When you come to that meeting.[1682.86][1682.89][S02. You sit quietly.[1686.26][1686.29][S02. You don't need to say any answer.[1690.26][1690.29][S02. When Jesus says, "Non perum snanattheningalperakkuduma."[1695.06][1695.08][S02. We are able, they said.[1700.26][1700.29][S02. How many baptisms are there?[1703.86][1705.46][S02. Don't talk, those who come in the morning.[1709.26][1709.29][S02. How many baptisms are there?[1711.86][1712.86][S02. Don't worry, fear, say loudly.[1716.86][1717.26][S02. One, two, three.[1720.26][1720.29][S02. Three, say three. There are four baptisms. It is not so like different denomination. I saw a believer. I got taken three baptisms. How did you take three baptisms? They are the only churches in the world. I went to Age Church, they said, "This is a true church." Before that I was in the church of God. Have you taken baptism? Because of the churches, they are the only churches in the world. This is the only name, the church of God.[1768.86][1768.89][S02. If you take baptism in the church, you will go to heaven.[1773.86][1773.89][S02. I am not saying about going to church, to church.[1776.86][1776.89][S02. According to the scripture, we have to get four kinds of baptisms.[1782.26][1782.29][S02. We will take the baptism which you have baptized with this.[1787.86][1787.89][S02. This is the end of the script.
இந்த அபிஷேகம் கருது, பரிசுத்தாவின் அபிஷேகம் கருது. நீ பரிசுத்தாவின் அபிஷேகத்தில் மூள்குவது.
You have to immerse in the Holy Ghost.
முழுவதும் நீ பரிசுத்தாவிக்குள்ளியே வந்துடுவது.
Holy, you have to come in the Holy Ghost.
ஆவினால் நடத்தப்படுவது.
You are leading by the Holy Spirit. You are instructed by the Holy Spirit.
ஆவினால் சரிரத்தின் சைகளை அளிப்பது.
You have to destroy by the Spirit.
முழுவதும் பரிசுத்தாவின் கட்டுப்பாட்டில் உன்னை வாழ்க்கே வருவது நான் உண்மையான அபிஷேகம்.
The whole life is come under the control of the Holy Spirit is a true.
நீ சும்மா ஞானசானம் பெற்றீங்க, ஆவில் நின்றி வெளியே போய் சந்தபோட்டு வாக்காத மனிட்டு முடிஞ்சு போம்போது கோயிலில தான் பிடிச்ச சந்தபோட முடியும். ஐப்பு இங்கேதான் ஆள் சிக்குவான் சுளிட்டு நீ வாழ்க்கேல் நடந்தது நேன் பிரோஜனைக்கு கிடையாத.
It is no use after getting the baptism, you are going out and fighting with others.
பரிசுத்தாவில் நீ மூள்கணும்.
You have to immerse in the Holy Spirit.
எப்படி தன்னேறு ஞானசான் தெளிப்போய் நம்ம ஒத்துக்கொள்ள மாட்டேன் கிரமா?
As we are not accepting the springing baptism.
கொலந்தே ஞானசானத்தை நம்ம ஏற்றுக்கொள்ள மாட்டேன் கிரமா?
We are not accepting the springing baptism.
கொலந்தே கொலந்தே ஞானசான.
The child baptism.
அது போல நீ இந்த நாட்களில் தேளித்த பரிசுத்தாவில் நம்மக்கு தேவகிடையாத.
We no need the springing or baptism.
நீ பரிசுத்தாவில் மூள்கணும்.
You have to immerse in the Holy Spirit.
நீ வெளியே வரம்போது உன்னைப் பார்க்கிறவா அபிஷேகத்தைப் பார்க்கணும்.
When you are coming out, one who sees.
உன்னைப் பார்வேல் அபிஷேகம் அருக்கணும்.
In your mouth there should be anointing.
உன்னைப் பார்வேல் அபிஷேகம் அருக்கணும்.
There is anointing.
உன்னை மார்த்தில் அபிஷேகம் அருக்கணும்.
In your words there should be anointing.
உன்னை நடக்கேல் அபிஷேகம் அருக்கணும்.
If in your conversation there should be anointing.
ஆப்ரிக்கில் ஒருத்தர் இருக்கிறார்.
There is a man in Africa.
அவுத்துல்ல நான் கையாசெச்சா என்னோடு செந்து யார் கையாசெகிறா? ஆவியான ஒரு கையாசெகிறார்.
If I shake my hand, the spirit of God will shake.
அவர் அசைக்காமயா? கையைக் கூட நான் அசைக்க மாட்டேன் கிரமா?
Without his permission, I will not shake.
நான் நடந்த அவரை என்னோடு கூட என்னுசிறார்? நடக்கிறார்.
If I walk, he is also walking.
அந்த அளவுல ஆவியான ஒருடைய என்னை நடக்கிறவங்க இன்னைக்கு இருக்கிறார்.
There are people also going with the spirit of God today.
என்னக்கு தேவனோடு நடக்கவில்லையா?
He did not go, he did not walk with God.
அந்த பரிசுத்தாவில் மூள்குதல்.
He is immersing in the Holy Spirit.
முன்றாவது எனக்குப் பின்னருக்கு அக்கிணியாலே உங்களுக்கு ஞானசான கொடுப்பா?
Comes behind me, will baptize with the fire.
பரிசுத்தாவில் பெற்றாமற்றும் போதா அது அக்கிணி அபிஷேகத்தை நீ பெற்றுக்கொள்ள வேண்டும்.
You have received the fire of anointing also.
உனக்கே தெரியும் அனல் பற்றி ஏறியும்.
You yourself know the fire will burn in you.
அது தான் ஒரு மேன்மியான ஒரு அனுபவ.
It is a great, excellent thing.
நீ அபிஷேகத்தில் நெரும்பும்பொழுது உனக்கே தெரியும் உன்னை படி புல்லா அக்கிணியா மாற்றுந்தார்.
You yourself know when you are feeling in the spirit, your body is full of fire.
பிசாசு பிடிச்சவா உங்கள் பக்கத்தில் இருந்தானா ஏறியுது மா?
It has one devil process man sitting here, we can say.
எங்கள் அக்கிணி வருது? உனக்குள் இருக்கிற அக்கிணி அவந்த வல்லமை சுட்டெறிக்கும்.
The fire from you will burn him.
பரிசுத்தாவின் அக்கிணி இறங்கும்பொழுது பாவத்தை அளிக்கக்கூடிய ஒரு சக்தி வருகிறது.
The power of Holy Spirit comes and destroy the power of me.
இது நம்ம எல்லாருமே பரிசுத்தாவின் அபிஷேகத்தைப் பெற்று மெட்டு பெற்றது நாலை.
Because we have received only the power of Holy.
இங்க ஆவில் நடம்புறவா வெளியே போய் என்னுசிறா? தகரார் பண்றவா?
We are here, we are feeling the spirit going out and making progress.
மறுபடிப்போய் பாவிகளாக பாவஞ்சேரா.
Again, we are going as a sinner and doing.
அது ரீசன் என்ன?
What is the reason for that?
பாவத்தை மெர்க்கொள்ளக்கூடிய அந்த அக்கிணி உன்னத்திலே வரவில்லை.
Because you did not get the fire to overcome the sin.
அது அபிஷேகத்தில் ஞானசானத்தில் முன்றாவது பகுதி, நீ எல்லாரா அக்கிணி அபிஷேகத்தைப் பெறணும்.
The third part of the baptism, you have to receive the anointing of the fire.
உலக குப்பைகள், உலக எண்ணங்கள் வந்து உங்களுக்கு ஒன்னு ஒரு செட்டன் லிமிட் உன்னை நெறிங்க வந்துச்சினாலே ஏறிஞ்சிரும்.
If the valation and the value dust comes near you, it will burn away.
சூரியனை நோக்கி ஒரு ராக்கிட் போச்சு.
A rocket went near the sun.
செட்டன் லிமிட் போன உன்னை அப்படி ஊரியிட்ச்சா.
After the set of limit, it melts away.
அதுக்கு பிறகு அது ஒன்னுமே பண்ண முடியாத.
It couldn't do anything after that.
அது அங்கே இருக்கிற கோடி கணக்கான டிக்ரி அந்த வெய்ல் அந்த உச்சனத்தில் இதெல்லாம் ஒன்னுமே இல்லாம் பெடு.
Because of the degrees of heat, it melts away.
அதுல இதுவரைக்கு நீங்க பிரசங்கத்தில் ரெண்டு ஞானசானத்தைக் கேட்டுடு, நீங்க இதெமத்து வாங்கிவச்சுட்டு உக்காந்து இருக்கீங்க.
You are sitting here without hearing the baptism alone.
அது தான் சிவகாசில் கீர் அப்பளே ஆக மாட்டக்.
Because the kier is not a plain.
அபிஷேகம் புல்ஸ்ரிங்கில் வராதுக்கு ரீசன் இதுதா?
It is the reason that anointing is not a full speed.
வந்திய தள்ளி தள்ளி விட்டு எட்டற்கை கொண்டு போவோம் டீருக்கு.
We have to go and push the vehicle and come.
அப்படியிருக்கக் கூடாது.
It is if it is.
நீ அக்கிணியாய் மாறிருந்தோம்.
You have to become a fire.
அவன் நீ முழுவதும் அக்கிணியாய்மாய் வந்துருந்தோம்.
The fire should come upon you whole.
அப்படியானால் அக்கிணி சூள உன்னை ஒன்னுமே பண்ணாது.
Then the fiery furnace will not do anything with it.
அந்த அக்கிணிச்சூலில் சாத்ரக்மேஷக் நேகோ உள்ள நடந்து போய்க்கிட்டேன்.
The satrakmeshika, they walk.
என்ன இவனை பவர்புல் அக்கிணி.
Because they were fire.
இவன போய் அக்கிணி சோதனை இதெல்லாம் ஒன்னுமே பண்ணாது.
The fire of temptation will not do anything with it.
தாவிதே சொல்றான் அக்கிணி கூடான் நான் நடந்து போனான் சொல்றான்.
David even says, I am walking through the fire.
ஏசாய்ய திருக்கது சொல்றான் அக்கிணி கூட போனா என்மேல் அது ஒன்னும் பற்றவே இல்லைன்னு சொல்றான்.
I say, I went through the fire.
அப்படியே புதியர்பட்டு சபை எப்படிப்பட்டோ அக்கிணிலால் நெரப்பபட்டு இருக்கவேணும்.
The new testament should be how kind of.
லுக்கா 22:09 லேன்னு சுளிருக்கிறது.
What does it look?
நான் பூமிலே அக்கிணியைப் போட வந்தேன், அது அக்கிணி பற்றி ஏறியவேண்டுமென்று விரும்புகிறார்.
I came to put the fire on the earth, I want to burn.
நீ அக்கிணில மூள்கினி வரணும்.
You have to come, immerse in the fire and come.
பிரதான ஆசரியனாகி யோசுவாவின் பார்த்த ஆண்டு வருந்துச்சுன்னார்.
What the Lord said, seeing the high priest.
அவன் அல்கவஸ்தரம் தரித்து உன்னை நின்று பொழுது.
And he was standing with a dirty dress.
சாத்தான் அவனுது உரவமான் நின்று உட்டுண்டா?
The Satan was standing again.
அப்புறம் ஆண்டு வருந்துச்சுன்னார், இவன் அக்கிணிலுந்து தப்புவிக்கப்பட்ட கொள்ளியலா நீ எப்படி இவனை டச்பன்ன முடியுன்னு கேக்கிறார்.
He was taken from the band of fire.
நான் எருசலாமே அக்கிணியாகு, அது அக்கிணி சூளியாகு மாற்றுவேன் ஆண்டு வருந்துச்சுன்னு.
The Lord says, I will make Jerusalem as a fire and the fire.
சர்ச்சி சர்ச்சத்தை எப்படி மாத்துறாரு? அக்கிணி சூளியாக மாற்றுறாரு.
He changed the church as the flame of fire.
அந்த சபை அக்கிணியாய்மாய் இருக்கணும்.
The church should be the flame.
சரியான ஒரு அனல் முட்டப்பட்ட சபையாக இருக்கவேணும்.
It should be a church with a fully burnt fire.
நான் காவு ஞானசானா?
The fourth one.
லுக்கா 22:50.
Luke 12:50.
ஆகிலும் நான் முழுகவெண்டிய ஒரு ஸ்நானம் உண்டு.
There is a baptism I have to take.
அது முடியும் அலாவும் நான் எவளவோ நிறுக்கப்படுகிறான்.
I am Satan without the.
இது தான் கடைசி ஞானசான.
This is a lost baptism.
இந்த ஞானசானம் ஒரு நிறுக்கமான ஒரு பாதையைக் காண்பிக்கறார்.
He shows us Satan path.
பாடுகள் நிறந்ததான் கிருஷ்டவ வாழ்க்கை.
The Christian life is full of suffering.
எதிர்புகள் நிறந்ததான் கிருஷ்டவ வாழ்க்கை.
The Christian life is full of apostasy.
பூமிலே உங்களுக்கு உபத்தரம் உண்டு.
There are sufferings in the world.
பிரச்சனை இல்லெல்லாம் சொல்ல முடியாது.
We can't say there is no problem.
பிரச்சனை வந்து நீ இந்த உலகத்தோடு கண்டது போன போரதா உன்னை விட்டு வெலக்கு.
After you go from the well, only the problem will go from me.
அது இந்த உலகத்தில் உள்ளங்காஜிவிக்கிலேனா அடுத்த நரகம் உனக்கு வெறிய பிரச்சனைதா?
If you don't live properly in the well, again you will get problems.
ஒரட்டங்கள் உண்டு.
There are problems.
எதிர்புகள் உண்டு.
You are having apostasy.
அந்த நாமதை ஜைக்கவேண்டும்.
But we have to overcome that.
அந்தப்படினால் நாம் இந்த நாட்களில் நாம் முழுகவெண்டிய ஒரு ஸ்நானம் இருக்கறார்.
There is a baptism, we have to take.
அதுக்கு டெயிலி நம்ம ரெடி பணிக்கணும்.
We have to be ready for that.
ஒவ்வொரு நாள் நம்ம ஆயத்துபடுத்திக்கொள்ள.
Every day we should ready for that.
பிரச்சனை வந்தாது, எதிர்கொள்ள குடிய சக்தியை தேவனத்திலும் நுட்பு பெற்றுக்கொள்ள.
We have to get the power from God to overcome that.
அடுத்த நாள் சிலுவையில் அடிபடுந்துன்னு சொன்ன உடனு ஏசு கிருஷ்யு எருவதுல கச்சமே இல்லைது உன்னை உயிருதே உச்சின.
Jesus brought out his God, the very next day he wanted to give.
அந்த பிரதான நாம் முழுகவெண்டிய நாலாவது ஸ்நானம் பாடுகளின் பாதை.
There is the path of suffering, we have to take the.
இதை நீ பெறக் கூடுமான் சொன்ன உன்னை அவங்க சொன்னாங்க, இதெல்லாம் ரெம்பஸ் சிம்பில் எனக்கு சிங்காசானா வேணும்.
Only we need the throne, we can get it easily.
இந்தக் கேத்தனை வருந்து நானுக்கு வாங்சிக்கிறீர்களா?
How many of you are desiring this?
அடுத்த ஏசு சொன்னார், நான் குடிக்கும் பாத்தரத்தில் நீ குடிக்க முடியுமா?
Can you drink the cup which I drink?
அவட்டனை அவங்க சொன்னாங்க, நாங்க குடிகிறான் அண்டவரே.
We can drink, oh Lord.
ரெடியா இருக்கிறான், அவங்கு வெண்டியது சிங்காசான.
They were ready, they wanted only the throne.
அவட்டனை அவங்க அதுக்கு ஒத்துக்கொள்விருக்கிறார்.
They accept it for that immediately, if you don't get.
அவங்க சொன்னா என்னைப் போன்றவன் ஓடிப்போவானா?
Such kind of man, run away from here.
அபிஷேகம் மன்னப்பட்ட நான் ஓடிப்போவேனா?
Shall I go, run away?
ஏசுனுத்துல இவள நன்மைப் பெற்றவா ஆண்டு வருட்டு நான் வெளியுப்போவேனா?
Will I go out from God? I have got so many blessings.
ஆண்டு வருட்டு சொல்றான், பிதாக்குடுக்கிற பாத்தரத்தை நான் பானமட்டுறது ரெடியா இருக்கு.
I am ready to drink in the cup which the father gave to me.
யோவான சுவிசேஷம் 29:21.
John 19:21.
அங்க 29.
29.
அங்க என்ன சொல்லப்படுகிறது?
What does it say there?
அவர் காதாகமாயிருக்கிறன்னு சொன்ன உடனு கசப்பு கலந்த காடிய அவருக்கு குடிக்குடுத்தார்.
They gave a sponge with vinegar to give.
வாழ்க்கை வாழ்க்கை சில நேரத்தில் கசப்பாக மாறு.
The life may become a bitter one sometimes.
சில நேரங்களில் வாழ்க்கை விரக்தியாடைய சூள்நடைய உண்டாக்கு.
Sometimes the life may be disappointed one.
அல்லா கேட்டுக்கேங்க, பிரச்சனை வரம்போது முழுக்குக்கூடாது.
You are very careful, when you get the problem, you shouldn't blink.
இப்பது துங்கிட்டு அப்ப அந்த நேரத்தில் முழுச்சிட்டு பாஸ்டர் பாஸ்டர்னா எந்த பாஸ்டர் வருவாரு?
If you sleep now and after that, if you call me pastor, what is the use?
நான் ஜௌம் மண்ணு அப்படின்னு சொல்லுவா?
I'll say, I'll pray for you.
பிரச்சனை தீர்றுது தீர்றுது எப்படி?
How we can solve the problem?
என்னதா அம்மா அப்பாவ பெற்றவங்கள் இருந்தாலும், பீஸ் கிட்ட நாங்கள் இருந்தாலும் எக்ஸாம் நீதா அள்ளதனும்.
You have to write only the exam, whatever your father or mother, they give the peace for you.
அப்படிதானா? அவங்க உங்களுக்கு யுனிப்பம் இங்கித் தருவாங்க.
They will give you a uniform.
பீஸ் கிட்டுவாங்க.
They will give you.
மாக்கெட் மனி கொடுப்பாங்க.
They will give you pocket money.
மண்டேலை ஏர்ல நான் உங்களுக்கு டியூசன் வச்சுகொடுப்பாங்க.
They will give you tuition if you can't understand anything.
அதுக்கு மேல வரென்னு செய்றது?
Other than that, what they can do?
எக்ஸாம் வாங்கும் எல்லாம் அள்ள முடியுமா?
Will they write the exam for you?
உனக்கு போதிப்போ, உனக்கு உதிவிசீவம், உனக்காக ஜௌம் மண்ணு ஓவாசிப்போ, பிரச்சனை நீதான் டீல் பண்ணும்.
You have to deal the problem, we will pray for you and help for you.
இப்பது துங்கிட்டு அந்த நேரத்தில் விளிக்குக்கூடாது.
If you sleep now and after that, you shouldn't blink.
நீ அந்த பாத்தரத்தில் கசப்பு கலந்த வாழ்க்கை சில நேரத்தில் வரு.
Some bitter life may come sometime.
வாழ்க்கையே வேண்டாங்கிறார் ஒரு விரக்தில் எல்லாம் வரு.
You will get a disappointment, I no need the life.
இது ஒரு பாத.
This is a path.
ஏசுவே சொன்னார், அண்டவரே இந்த பாத்தர நீங்க கூடுமானால் என்னோடு நீங்க போட்டுண்டு சொல்ல.
Lord, if this was.
ஏய் என்னைக் கை விட்டிருந்து கத்துனா?
He asked, why did you leave me, Lord?
இது தான் சிங்காசானத்துக்கு போகுற பாதை.
This is the path to the throne.
இந்த ரூட்லான் நீ போகணும்.
In this route, only you have to go.
எதிலே நீ போக முடியாது.
We can't go in anywhere else.
முன்றாவது பானம்.
The third drink.
லுக்கா 22:22:11:24.
22:22.
22:11:24:24.
Seventeen or twenty.
அங்க கம்யுனியன் சர்விச் சகுரித்து சொல்லிருக்கிறார்.
It is said about the communion service.
ஏசு கிருஷ்யு இந்த பானத்தை புசியாக கூடித்தார்.
Jesus Christ drank that drink.
நான் காளில கூடச் சொன்னாய்.
In the morning, I said.
பற்றிக்கப்பட்டு ஞானசான எடுத்துட்டேனா, சாகுர வரைக்கு நீ ராபோஜன் எடுக்கணும்.
If you take the baptism, if you are saved and take the baptism, you have to take the communion till your death.
என்னக்கு நீ ஞானசான எடுத்தேயோ, அதுல இருந்து உன்னை ஓட்டம் முடியுற வரைக்கும், நீ ஒரு ராபோஜன் கூட மிஸ் பண்ணிருக்குக்கூடாது.
You shouldn't even miss even a single communication from the day you have taken the baptism.
கம்யுனியன்.
The communion, from the day you have taken the baptism to the end.
ஞானசான எடுத்து இருந்து, இதுவரைக்கு ஒரு கம்யுனியன் கூட நான் மிஸ் பண்ணல்னு சொல்றோம், அங்க தாயுசெய்து கையில வைதுங்க பகலா.
Those were the righteous, those who did not miss any.
போட்ட கை வைதுங்க.
Communion.
நம்மிடை நலவர் எவளும் குறஞ்சிருச்சுன்னு யோசிப்பா.
You think how is less our state?
அப்படியானால் என்ன நடந்துச்சு?
But what happened if so?
நீ நித்திய ஜீவனை விட்டு வெளிகிட்டேன் அர்த்தம்.
You have gone astray from the eternal life.
யோவான சுவிசேஷம்.
John the Gospel.
6:11:24.
Six.
அங்க என்ன சொல்லப்பட்டு இருக்கிறது?
What does it say there in the six?
53:11.
And we see in the.
மனிஷகுமார்ந்து மாம்சத்தை நீ புசியாமலும்.
If you don't drink the flesh.
அவருடைய ரத்தத்தை நீ பானமட்டுமானும் இருந்தால்.
Unless you drink the blood.
உங்களுக்குள் ஜீவனில்லை.
You don't have life in you.
நீ விச்வாசியா இருக்கை, ஞானசான எடுத்துருக்கை, பரிசுத்தாவில் பெற்றுருக்கை, கானிக்கெல்லாம் குடுக்கற. அன்ன நீ ஜீவனில்லாத ஒரு விச்வாசி.
You are a believer without life because he got taken baptism and received Holy Spirit.
யோவான 6:54.
What is John 6?
என் மாம்சத்தை புசித்து என் ரத்தத்தை பானமட்டும் நீங்கு நித்திய ஜீவன் உண்டு, அவனை நான் கடைசினாளில் எழுப்புவேன்.
One could eat with my flesh and drink with my blood, that's eternal life while raising him up in the last day.
நான் வாலியம் கூட்டுறதுக்கு ரெம்ப ரெம்ப வரை எழுப்புறதுக்குதான் நான் வாலியம் கூட்டற.
I raise the volume to make you.
சிடிம் நான் சவுண்ட கூட்டறன்னா புருஞ்சுகினும் யாரோ ஒராள் தூங்குறான் அர்த்தம்.
One fellow is sleeping because I raised the volume.
என் மாம்சத்தை புசித்து என் ரத்தத்தை பானமட்டும் நீங்கு நித்திய ஜீவன் உண்டு, அவனை நான் கடைசினாளில் எழுப்புவேன்.
One who eats with my flesh and drinks with my blood, that's eternal life.